Hi, everybody. I am Amy Wozinski. It is 7:30 and it is August 18th. And this is the work session of the mayor and council meeting. So, welcome to everybody. And if anybody has a mobile device, please put it on mute so we can have a meeting without any interferences. So Linda, can you please read the Open Public Meetings Act? Please?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first 10 days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August 12, 2022 sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
May you please take a roll call?
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
Mayor Bernstein is absent.
Okay, now we have the public comment. This is one of three opportunities to speak. There'll be two more in our regular council meeting. Does anybody wish to come up? If you do, please come up and state your name and address. Seeing no one, we'll bring it down back to the meeting. We actually have a really special meeting today. We have some special guests. On my left is Mr. Jay and on my right is Mr. Sid. And they are mayors of the day. So they, their mom actually won a bid in Affy, which is the Allendale Foundation for Education Excellence. It was a fundraising night for the school. Affy is a nonprofit organization. It's dedicated to fund grants for the enrichment of pre-K through eighth grade. So this is really super fun because they're mayor of the day. They learn to see the ins and outs of working government. They get to see what the leadership does in this town and have an opportunity to really, you know, step up. So we actually had some fun today. We first went to where? Fire department. We saw all of our trucks, right? What was your, what was the most fun part for that for you? Spraying the hose. We actually sprayed the hose. It was actually a lot of fun. And then we went and we met Chief Dylan, who's here tonight. And we went to the Allendale Police Department and we saw all of the apparatuses in that one room. What was that one room? What did they call it? The what? The cell thing, actually really close. So what's the, what's the thing that's in the cell? That starts with an N? Because the science guy, nucleus, remember? They called it the nucleus of the whole entire building. And what did we see in there? But didn't we see your school? There's cameras that show their school. So now they're going to wave at the cameras when they actually go in there. So it was a lot of fun. And then Officer Sean took them downstairs and they got to see the jail. Right? And then they went in and they saw the police car. So it was a lot of fun. And then we came back to Borough Hall and John Gill took them on a tour of the library. And then we came back and we had pizza and chocolate milk and Sprite. So, so it was actually a really fun day. So what we're going to do now is make it official. So we're going to actually make you guys official mayors and we're going to do an oath of office. Remember what we talked about with the hand on the Bible? So we're going to go down there and then we're going to, we're going to do this right. And then we're going to come back up here and read some proclamations. Okay, here we go. Ready? Guys want to ride the scooter? This is what we have. Okay. Read after me. I. Do solemnly swear. Do solemnly swear. That I will support. The Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of New Jersey. That I will bear true faith. And allegiance to. The same. And to the governments established in the United States. And in this state. Under the authority of the people. And I will faithfully. Impartially. And justly. Perform all duties of mayor. For a day. To the borough of Allendale. According to the best of my ability. So help me God. Now we are going to do even more fun things and read proclamation. So we have two proclamations and we're going to do one for each one because each child has something special about them. You know, we have our. Okay, so the proclamation first is in honor of Mayor Sid Don Day. So whereas young people gain valuable citizenship skills by learning about state and local government. And whereas in honor of our young citizens, a mayor for the day event was auctioned at the Allendale Foundation for Educational Excellence Annual Dinner and Auction. An event that helps fund grants to enrich pre-K through eighth grade educational experiences at Hillside and Brookside Schools. Whereas the mayor for a day event is a first step in the world of local politics as the winner sees the inner workings of Borough Hall and other municipal facilities as they follow the mayor and their duties as the leader of the borough of Allendale. And whereas by working to educate our young people in the duties, responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship, this event will contribute to the success of the winner as a future leader of our state nation. And whereas the Don family won the mayor for a day prize for their son Sid, who is raising, who is a rising eight-year-old student at Hillside School. Whereas Sid is interested in dance, audiobooks, and one day he would like to be a pilot. And whereas Sid loves to swim all year round and is a beginner level in Taekwondo. And will learn to play the recorder in the upcoming school year. Yeah, you like that? So now therefore be it resolved that the mayor of the borough of Allendale and council officially proclaim that August 18th be recognized as Mayor Sid Don Day within the borough of Allendale and be it further resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Allendale encourages all citizens to work together to prepare our young people to be good citizens. So congratulations, Sid. Right now it's Jay's turn. Whereas young people gain valuable citizenship skills by learning about the state and local government. And whereas in honor of our young citizens, a mayor for the day event was auctioned at the Allendale Foundation for Educational Excellence Annual Dinner and Auction. An event that helps fund grants to enrich the pre-K through eighth grade educational experience at Hillside and Brookside Schools. And whereas the mayor for a day event is a first step into the world of local politics as the winner sees the inner workings of the Borough Hall and the municipal facilities. And they follow the mayor around in their duties as leader in the borough of Allendale. And whereas by working to educate our young people in the duties, responsibilities and opportunities of citizenship, this event will contribute to the success of the winner as a future leader of our state and nation. And whereas the Don family won mayor for a day prize for their son Jay, who is a 10-year-old student at Brookside School. And whereas Jay is interested in coding, chess, STEM and math. He loves to read, big nate, swim. Eat buffalo wings, probably at the ADNJ, and is an expert in Taekwondo. And whereas Jay is enrolled in the gifted and talented program and he plays the clarinet in the Brookside Band. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Amy Wozinski, and the mayor and council of Allendale officially proclaim that August 18th be recognized as Mayor Jay Don Day within the borough of Allendale. And be it further resolved that the mayor and council of the borough of Allendale encourage all of its citizens to work together to prepare our young people to be good citizens. Pass down there one more time. One more time, we're going to go back down and take a picture with you guys, with everybody else here, right? Let's stop there. Yes, good idea. Okay. One more time for a picture. Yep, all the way down. Really? Scoot it on down.
We're going to look over here. Ready? Look over here. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you so much.
We did put something in front of you for your sign for raises for the borough employees.
That on the agenda, right?
All right, you guys ready? We're going to have an agenda review now, read by Jay. That part right there.
Nate, our regular session agenda consists of. Tonight, our regular session agenda consists of introduction of ordinance 22 to 13, 14 resolutions on the constant, consent agenda, closed executive session of the Allendale Senior Housing. Does anyone have any questions or comments or questions or would like to comment on any of these agenda items?
Andy, press up. And ask him to state his name and address.
Please come up and state your name and address.
Well, Mayor Jay, March 7th, 22th, reading place. I was wondering if it could be a brief description of the special law enforcement officers. If I have an idea of what that sport.
This SLEO? I would actually like Mike to do it because he'll do it much more.
So it's a program that we're continuing in Northern Highlands High School, a special law enforcement program. It's SLEO three, class three officers. They're part-time. They're reimbursed by the Board of Education completely. And they're there, posted at the school for a safe view of students and staff.
And we've had them for how many years now?
It's a third year.
Third year, I think, yeah.
So it's been very successful. It's actually proven time and time again with some things that happened in a large regional high school. You're very well.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing no one, we will go to council reports. So council, this councilwoman Ed O'Connell, just reading.
I didn't know that happened.
Sorry.
I would have been, I should have been. Thank you, Council President.
Excuse me, look at the color red, Linda can turn.
Thorough cleanup of the rear of the DPW will completed by next week. If anyone hasn't been back there, Ron took me on a tour last week. Looks awesome. I'm sure it looks even better now. All borough-owned properties have received their summer trimming and look great. Extra attention was given to the police department and Orchard Commons. Third sweeping of West Side area of the borough has been completed and the third sweeping of East Side will start on Monday. If the weather holds up and it's that time of year that we're prepping the ball fields and sports will begin next week as well. Some have started already, I believe.
Yes, actually.
So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilman Matt O'Toole.
Sure. Quick report, the police department is actively working with school districts to improve security and safety plans for the upcoming school year. Working on some capital improvements to IT at police headquarters. The police department is working with borough officials on downtown streetscape project. We have some ongoing discussions about equipment and some personnel matters with the fire department. And the numbers, year-to-date fire calls, 147. Year-to-date DMS calls, 488. And year-to-date police record entries and calls for service, 10,401.
Wow. Excellent.
Busy, busy.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Suzanne Lovasolo.
Yes, thank you. So the land use committee met via Zoom yesterday morning. And as usual, we just kind of discussed some resident property maintenance issues and concerns, what have you. I just want to, once again, take this moment to thank the team that meets once a month for my land use committee, Ron Kistner, our director of operations, Anthony Hackett, our code official, Mike Freeland, our engineer, Ari Bernstein, our mayor, Steve Sasso, councilman, and then Mike Lee Matola, who is our property maintenance officer. These people often deal with a lot of concerns that come our way that truthfully, maybe they shouldn't be spending so much time on, and that I really wish neighbors would communicate better with each other. One of the things that we continue to deal with are tree maintenance issues. And I just want to remind people, you are responsible for the trees on your property and the care of them. And the borough does its best to maintain the things that are on our property and what have you. I also want to thank Chris Bada, our attorney, Ray Wiss, also our borough attorney, who has helped us with a few things along the way. And our land use board headed by Kevin Quinn, Michael Sarico and Joe Deluizio. Land use board, if you've never come to a land use board meeting, they're great. I think we have a great team. We're very friendly. We're not scary at all. I promise that. And we do our best to accommodate our residents. So once again, thank you to this great team.
Thank you very much. We're going to move to staff reports and then I will do my report and the mayor's report. So Ray Wiss.
Thank you. Worked with Mr. Kistner on some property maintenance, personnel and contract matters with the Borough Clerk's Office on ordinance and resolution, some of which are on tonight's agenda. The 220, 230, I guess now it's really 220, has gotten more formative and I'm sure the council president will be talking about that in her report. And I would say that the water utility sale is progressing and moving rapidly. We are probably at the point where if it's not every day, I would say four of the five days, we have an hour or more Zoom meetings as details are filled in and documents are finalized. The VPU hearing, which was conducted earlier this month, went well. There was very little questioning from the board. The actual approval is going to be scheduled for the month of September and we anticipate that that will go well. So, you know, it's in a very formative stage, working with Chief Dylan on some departmental matters. And obviously, Chief has been very proactive in bringing policies up to date and commendable job certainly from my vantage point. And I think that, I should say, the other thing that we have talked about as early or as late as this evening is the governor has signed the legislation, which was Senate Bill 3340, on outdoor dining, extending that. And Allendale has always been very, very proactive and in the forefront of making sure that the restaurants are able to accommodate. And you know that that legislation is about sidewalk and street dining to expand the parameters of what's available. And Allendale is already jumping on the new legislation and making sure that we're compliant and keeping the downtown vibrant. That's pretty much it.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Ray. Linda, our municipal clerk, do you have any reports?
Nothing to report.
Alyssa Mayer actually gave me something to read on behalf of our CFO and Ron Kistner, our director of operations and administrative officer. Your report, sir?
Thank you. I want to thank, as you all know, we have had a major transition in our clerk's office. And I want to thank Linda, Carrie and Linda M. And our two wonderful holdovers, John Gill and Amanda Richards. The transition, I was very concerned about the transition, losing the show. It's gone much, much, much better than I possibly hoped it would go. Now I kind of visit, I was, when I visit, they just kind of come and leave. So it works. Now, they really, thank you so much, you guys. Really, you're a great team and you're doing a great job for the residents. As Ray Wiss said, the water sales is coming along very well. On my end of it, there's a lot to be involved now with the field visits, dealing with easements, and also dealing with the temporary P5 facility, which is going to ultimately be located down by DPW. A lot of additional meetings on that with, plus with Bergen Utility is already, a lot of meetings, a lot of progress, a lot of good communication on that end of it. As Council O'Connell said, we, the rear area of the DPW facility, which visited numerous times, mostly some back there, a few cleanup, some of them were just bent here. It goes back to the year before I came here.
Yeah.
It looks even better. And what we did, we got out of it was the way the machine works, we've got enough clean topsoil now, really. I mean, I know you, you know your topsoil, that the topsoil came out, it's really, it's like $25. We are tops, it's really good quality topsoil. So we're set there. We're getting next week, jobs are going to be finished. The concrete boulders get crushed into three eighths inch stone. And I'll be able to patch and put like a road down, use it on my loader. I'll be able to put a road back in instead of dealing with mud or that situation. Really is a great improvement. Happy way it came out. I thank you for your support on that because it costs a few dollars to get done. Thank you. We also, the Capitol doing, we get ready to order, repair it due to refurbishment of Clocktown Downtown area. I know that's a big interest of you. We did our pre-construction downtown streetscape project in a couple of weeks. Like everything else in this country, the contract is ready to go, which is weak for material.
Yeah.
It's unfortunate. That's going along well. And with the Capitol, we'll be ordering, looking at some new lawn mowers, but everything. We look at trex, just trex material, six months down the road now. It's just, it's just.
Yeah, there was an article in the Bergen Record, actually, they asked me for a quote about just that. And they had borough administrators and council people and mayors from all over New Jersey. Basically, everybody's feeling the same issues.
I went to a seminar in Atlantic City when we were going and because of just every reason. If you order some of the trucks, some equipment you ordered now, you will not see a 2024.
Yeah, yeah.
Anyway, thank you.
All right, anything else? So Tyler, do you have a report? Our headmaster, IT expert.
All systems are continuing to be operational. We're working on some capital improvements, working with the chief on continuing to make sure all of our systems are running smoothly. Year-to-date phone calls on our system has been 102,787.
This is crazy.
Unfathomable. Everything continues to be in operational shape.
Awesome. And John Gill, report.
Just working with our clerk's office, transitioning our new group, which as Ron said, has been fantastic with new leadership. Looking at doing some improvements on the website, kind of maintaining that since it's been, it's now one year old. And we're looking at doing some improvements, hopefully with upgrading our web streaming and stuff like that. So we're not just this side stationary camera, if we can get a little bit of a better situation.
Yeah, definitely looking forward to that.
Yeah.
Awesome, thank you. And Chief Dylan, last but not least.
So there's really no slow time in the year for public safety, but this is exceptionally busy time with school coming back in session September 6th. And we're working very closely with the schools. Good communication with the superintendent, made some changes that they requested for safe, pedestrian safety reasons and also school safety. We're making good progress, obtaining a SLEO three for the lower schools, more to follow on that. Tonight, we're approving, as you said, the high school, but the lower schools and express niches as well. So we're in that process. Worked with John Gill to create a police department website off of the borough's website. Up prior to my administration, it was done separately, but I feel it's very important for the borough and police department to have websites together. So we're going to branch off or actually come back to the town's website and I'm very excited about that prospect. We're just working with the crossing guards, getting them ready to go. We have some personnel switching and such and changes. And we're almost ready to roll out the body cams as well. So New Jersey legislature has required all law enforcement agencies in New Jersey to equip their officers with body cameras. Body worn cameras are going to be used every day of every shift. And we have all the equipment. We're just waiting on a manufacturer for training and some software updates, which are expected to occur the last week of September.
Great, thank you. Anything else? Okay, actually, I think I'll be able to fit mine in here. So 220 West Crescent, we're moving forward, the construction plans. We actually just received the architectural and structural piece of the construction plan. So we are giving them to one prospective developer. And as we all know, the, the project now is going to be 100% community center. There was actually an ordinance on the agenda tonight that actually talks about that before we were going to have a combination of offices. So this is just tidying up paperwork, but it's going to be 100% community center. It will be part community center, senior center, however, that's going to work out. And then the other side is going to be a little bit more for fitness or gym, gym type facility. And there'll be a kitchen in the middle. So we, as Ray mentioned, we are working on the documents to close and reviewing them. Actually, next Tuesday, we have a marathon meeting to get those done. We actually did apply for a grant for this project and we went, made it through the first round of it. So we're looking forward to hopefully completing that. There is also a grant that we put in for the investigation piece of it that finally came through from like two years ago. So working to actually get that money finally. The 2021 audit, the audit process for 2021 went very smoothly. Alyssa would like to thank everyone who helped gather all the information and provide the enormous number of files and information requested from all the auditors. This year, like last year, there are no recommendations, which is always a good thing. So no corrective actions need to be taken. Alyssa further states that she appreciates the cooperation of the staff and the department heads and making sure that all the policies and the guidelines for the financial transactions are being followed. And she wants to thank everybody for making her job easier and making her look so good. So keep up the good work. The budget in general is, is good to date. We're pretty much on track. Crestwood Lake is doing great. Our revenues are up, they're higher than last year. We are very healthfully financially. We have two bands this weekend. We have Blend on Friday night, which is kind of like a rock and roll kind of pop band. And we have Frank Sinatra on Sunday, both crowd favorites. So seven o'clock, be there. Frank Sinatra, I just talked to him today, is coming in from Queens instead of Hope Okin, but. And then we, of course, will close the Lake and Labor Day, which is coming up soon with our Klonavau tradition. We also had a surprise inspection at the lake and, which was, is always nerve-wracking, but everything went really well. So I just want to thank Tom Biscardi, the staff at Crestwood Lake, as well as the whole DPW for make, to make sure that everything is always in order. And the lake is always looking beautiful. We got the first email, football fences are going up, so fall is definitely on the way. Water, you know, there's just a huge push for the closing and we went through all of this to sell the water system, but there's so much more work now. You know, the word easements, I'm sure is something that nobody wants to hear. There's a lot of work. So I really wanted just to take a moment and thank the water committee and Ray and Ron and everybody, Suzanne and Liz, of course, who is on it, for really sticking through this, Mike Freeland. So, and also thanks to the residents who are adhering to our water conservation efforts in town. There is also a statewide effort moving forward, so voluntary, but it's really important. There's really not a lot of rain in the future, so. And then real quickly, 9/11, I just secured a speaker for our speaker series, so I'm very excited. Um, and then real quickly, nine eleven, I just secured a speaker for our speaker series, so I'm very excited about that. So we will be um, planning our nine eleven ceremony. It will be on Sunday, nine eleven. Um, again, thank you, admin offices, it's all, they're all working, um, they are are working very, very nice together. Um, a lot of new people, and everybody's really stepping up. And the AHI barbecue is next week, and that's it.
Need a motion?
Can you read this? Request a motion? Request? Yeah, yeah, could you read that? No? Yeah, you say it loud. Request a motion.
Request, request a motion.
To adjourn?
To adjourn.
The work session.
The work session.
So moved to O'Connell.
Second, Lava Solo.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All righty. Eight o'clock still. Made it. Good job. All right, crack next one up. All right, it's eight o'clock. Um, it is eight o'clock, and this is the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, regular session of the Allen Dale Mayor and Council. Welcome to everybody who is here and everybody who is actually online, and anybody who has cell phones, please put them on mute. Um, at this time, uh, sorry, uh, Linda, if you please um, call to order and read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the August twelfth, two thousand twenty-two sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lava Solo.
Here.
Councilman O'Connell.
Here.
Councilman O'Toole.
Here.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here.
And Mayor Bernstein's absent.
So now, ask everybody to stand to salute flag. So I'd like to open the floor to the public for uh, to speak on agenda items only. Anybody? Not seeing anybody? Um, we have an introduction to an ordinance, and oh my gosh, let's see. So this is the ordinance that um, sorry, I'm not used to the binder here. Um, that is uh, regarding the redevelopment ordinance of two twenty West Crescent. So we decided to make the uh, building a facility for the Allen Dale public only, so that meaning municipal offices are not going to be in the office in the building. So um, we just wanted to tidy up our paperwork and make sure that everything was completely buttoned up. So this is just a small tweak in the redevelopment plan, but it does require a change in the ordinance. So I would like um, to request a council member to make a motion to introduce and pass on first reading, ordinance twenty-two dash one-three, and set the hearing for September eighth, twenty twenty-two, at eight PM, or soon thereafter, in the council chambers of the Allen Dale Municipal Building.
So moved, O'Toole.
Anybody for a second?
Second, O'Connell.
Okay, Linda, can you please read the title of the ordinance and conduct a roll call, please?
Ordinance number twenty-two dash thirteen. In ordinance amending the redevelopment plan for certain properties situated along West Crescent Avenue. Roll call. Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lava Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Wozinski.
Here, yes. So now we have our consent agenda, our consent agenda, our matters that are considered routine. However, there is some that may be important to note. One, we have the review and certification of our annual audit for the fiscal year ending in twenty twenty-one. As we talked before, we are going to approve the contract for two class three law enforcement officers at Northern Highlands and then the SLEO offices as well. And we also are authorizing our uh, a grant. We are refurbishing one of our grants to uh, uh, finish up the playground improvements. So request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
A request with one amendment. Resolution twenty-two dash two zero three, there was an inadvertent admission, omission of uh, Kevin Montagna from Cert. Let's see him added to that, please.
Thank you. So request a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of Matt's comments. So move, Lava Solo.
Second, O'Connell.
Linda, please conduct a roll call.
Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lava Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Looks like we're done with all our committee reports. So now I'd like to open up the floor for public comments on any matter. If anybody has anything to to speak on, please come up and state your name and address. Mark?
Mark Silvestino, twenty-two, good in place. Steve Ryecroft, twenty-six, McDermott Court. Maybe I had provided this to you right before the work session, and this was also provided to Suzanne. It's being shared amongst all the council members, but I did print out a hard copy, so you can have a look.
Thank you.
For referring to the, uh, Steve is the recording secretary for the Green Team, and he has put quite a lot of effort into regaining our certification sustainable jersey. And uh, what he's come up against, um, number one, is that we need to renew the resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, certifying the meeting here in the borough, but also I'm going to let Steve take over to speak about the uh, the specifics of what he found. When he gave this report in his attempt to start the certification. I'm going to try to keep it brief, because I know there are a lot of agenda items here, so. Some of the things that we've come up with is, first of all, let's just give some numbers. The bronze certification requires a hundred and fifty points. We submitted two hundred and five, requested two hundred and five, what we thought would be reasonable based on evidence. Thirty-five points were accepted, and two hundred and five efforts were submitted. Thirty-five of them are things that I could do myself. I can enhance the documentation. I can get more things from the website that are available. But uh, I'm unable to find a number of things to be able to get us past seventy points. So I'll need eighty out of the, out of the ones that were submitted, I'll need eighty out of the remaining one hundred and thirty-five. So there's a list of them here, and I don't want to go through every one of them, but um, for example, for animals in community, which we actually got uh, for before. In terms of licensing, I know we do a lot with licensing, but they want more. They want like a whole census of how many animals we have that are registered, out of how many we know that are in the town. And we also have to have a campaign for how, for trying to increase the number of licenses. Also, we we need to get some more like newsletters that have tips and strategies, which I think Mark and I can work on with the team that does the newsletter, if we can have a section on there for tips and strategies to do better in terms of being green, whether it's recycling or uh, composting, or any other types of things that can be done. I know we're selling the composting now, would be good for us to put some tips in our newsletter about how to use it, who can benefit from it. Uh, for example, another thing is they, in a week, it said, do you have a local board of health? And I said, sure, we have lots of information about it in their meetings, and it's all documented there, but they also want that the local board of health chair will state that every member has completed online board of health training, which I don't know if we have. Provided by the New Jersey Local Board of Health. Plus, proof of annual information session conducted by health department representative. Again, uh, there are a number of these where I thought we had enough. Uh, the stormwater or stormwater ordinance that we have is considered to be minimum, not what they want. They want something around low impact development to be included in there, in the definition section. The the master plan is missing a few things that they're looking for in terms of um, sustainability.
We have a sustainability plan, actually.
Yeah, but they read it, and they didn't think it was enough. So.
All right.
So this is just the several of the kinds of things that we're up against in trying to get our certification. I have a whole list of items here that we could spend more time on if we had, you know, an agenda for it. There are, you can get actually two thousand points available, and we're speaking down to thirty-five, so.
Well, I I just have to say, I feel your pain, because I've been through it, and um, it was a lot of, the initiatives were very, very cumbersome. And, you know, they didn't necessarily fit a small community either. You know, we had a lot of the things, I felt, but they wanted to make sure that you had a board attached to them in minutes, and it had, like, it was just, it was, it was just a lot of extra work. Um, and then when I started it, it was because I thought we were going to have access to better grants, and that just wasn't the case. I I admire you for for uh, pushing forward with this. I'm more than happy to help in any way I can. I think everybody is, but some of them might be just too cumbersome for the borough. I'm just going to be completely honest to take on. Um, our mass, I mean, our sustainable plan, when we had it, for example, was fine back then, so I don't know what else. So I I mean, I'm happy to even, you know, talk to you and try to see what we can do, but I just don't want to make any promises, just because I know, you know, how um, some of the requirements are
Right.
are are a little tough, but some of them, I think, might be easy to check off. I think the dog license one, for example, is easy.
This is the main mission of the Green Team. It would be good for us to try.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you for your work on this, Steve. Yeah.
Steve has been.
I can tell. Now, I know, I can tell.
The point that he's trying to make in line making as well is that we can't do this without the help of the council. Because there's things that we can't answer without bringing it forward to you.
I think to the extent that different departments are involved, you're having given it to the borough, we'll at least allow allow a transmission to those departments and see what can be done. We we may run into, as the council president said, some obstacles. An example is, uh, you know, the land use board and the and the the engineer and the attorney there come up with a master plan that uh, they believe meets all state requirements, and then another, you know, certifying organization says, but we want something more. Um, you know, those are difficult.
There's, there's probably a number of other ways that we can achieve the certification and just going on the previous path, but we can still find a way to get the certification. And you don't have to get all of these, we just have to get about half of them.
Yeah, so if that's a list that you have, can you forward me that list?
Yeah.
It's, oh, it's in here? Oh, okay. Okay.
Actually, on pages.
Yeah, I always try to go for the ones with like the big points. All right. Got it. Thank you. Thank you.
Uh, and just a few other things. I wanted to thank Ron for the information that he provided to me about recycling and a few statistics. Um, I did speak with um, Councilwoman Homan about the water situation, because I was so concerned, but I was asking her about uh, if the voluntary requirements were helping to reduce the water usage, and she assured me that work.
I can, I can answer that. I speak to James Fahey, he was on vacation, James Fahey's our lights operator with Weolia. He was on vacation last week. So I dealt with Anthony Bruno, who was a former water operator, and uh, the majority, as known, the Allen Dale residents, majority of them have cooperated, our numbers are good, Fahey, the tank numbers uh, at night have been holding where they're supposed to be holding, and uh,
She mentioned that the way that you can tell is that the water pressure is not dropping.
Well, that's, I get, I get right from, uh, the operators in the morning, through the hours, midnight before, and other concerns and um, good numbers.
And I did want to say that I I felt twenty-five drops of rain in my deck before I came.
Oh, good, good. You all do a rain dance.
You are saying Monday or Tuesday.
My rain dance.
Good. Yeah.
And I just also wanted to thank Chief Dylan for hearing some concerns about that and his response.
Awesome. Thank you. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak? Sure, come on up, state your name and your address, please.
Hi, my name is Maria Borse of twenty-two Open Road, um, and I've been living with my family in Allen Dale for about three years. Um, a few months back, this survey incident occurred when a neighboring resident used a ladder to climb a fence and trespass into our property to construct a retaining wall with two-by-fours and sheets of plywood. Our surveillance cameras captured this man behind our trees while our son played in our backyard. This has made more concerning, since this is the same man who has been reported for flying drones around and above our property, among several other concerning behaviors that we have seen documented, documented it, from him and his wife with police and town over the last year or so. Since it was a Saturday when this incident occurred on Father's Day weekend, the police officers who responded to the incident asked us if we could hold off on any further action until Monday, when the town could weigh in on whether this makeshift retaining wall would be permitted to stay. Despite the officer's expectation that someone would be in contact with us on that following Monday, over two months passed, until I had to visit the borough offices myself to demand some sort of resolution to this issue. Ron Kistner and Anthony Hack immediately agreed once onsite at our property that what was constructed by this neighbor was not up to code and not allowed to stay. While we agreed to take it down ourselves, in an effort to discourage this neighbor from trespassing on our property at the end, we requested these residents be informed of this decision to avoid any negative in uh, interaction between ourselves and them when it was to be removed. But when the letter from town was delivered, it didn't list these neighbors by name at all, only referring to them as a third party. And sure enough, when we were on vacation the following week, this neighbor went against the town's decision and police instruction and added a metal netting secured by metal posts even further into our property, in an effort to secure these plywood pieces in place. When we simply asked the town whether these neighbors were informed of the town decision, um, after this latest violation, we were once again ignored. So my question to the council is, how do town officials and officers uh, plan on enforcing town ordinances and codes to protect everybody's rights as residents in Allen Dale? These incidents seem very, like, very blatant examples of residents, of a resident completely ignoring town code and direction, but there seems to be a significant amount of hesitancy in doing anything about it.
So I'll weigh in on what the line of authority would be, to the extent that there's a code violation, our code official would be the one to assess that. Um, if there is a trespass on your property, obviously you have remedies of both a civil trespass, or should you feel that it arises to something greater than that, you have the ability to go to the police department and file a complaint against your neighbor, uh, if they have perpetuated being on your side of the fence without your consent. So uh, I would say that those are really the the two avenues that your your statement leads me to is a code official would make a determination as to compliance or non-compliance, uh, and trespass is either in the civil or the criminal. And chief, I suppose if they want to file a criminal complaint, they'd go to the department.
Uh, correct. So um, depending on the the severity of the incident or what the statute is that you want to sign a complaint, typically, what would happen, you come to the police station at any point, you come there, go there after tonight, if you want, after you're done here, and request to sign a criminal complaint for a statute that's uh, in violation of two C, that's New Jersey Criminal Code.
All right, so we had asked, um, because we had had officers come to the property, and they said that, and we had installed security cameras, because it's been an ongoing issue with the neighbors since the project started. Um, but by their request, you know, or the, I should say, like, advice of the police department, had said to install security cameras. So we have him on our security cameras on our property, very clearly behind our pines, kind of working back there for like four or five hours. Um, and we didn't really notice him until we noticed what had come down, and we looked back, but the police officers had said from Allen Dale that we had, they had to capture him in the moment.
So the the ultimate decider of this would be a judicial officer, right? So he would give us entire, the entire packet, right, your video copies, copies of your statement, police reports, and we would forward them to a judicial officer, who's actually Judge Dorton for the borough, and he would determine whether it's what's called probable cause for the issuance of a complaint.
Okay.
So it's evidence-based determination.
Okay.
But I would suggest, you know, anybody to do that, they'll never have to, has to come.
All right, and then in terms of the council, for like the code officer, I just wanted to know, like, I feel like our concerns about these, like, escalating behaviors from using concerns about these like escalating behaviors from these neighbors aren't being addressed? Or at least there's like this huge delay and there's two months between, it was Father's Day weekend and we just had a decision two weeks ago that it wasn't allowed to stay. This is just enabling this behavior to continue and this constant kind of harassment to continue by breaking town ordinances and codes that are really clear. I mean, you can't have two by fours and plywood on that side of the fence. It was a, I mean, that's a safety issue for my children. It's an eyesore.
Is that on, is it on your property or his?
It's on my side. He built it on my side.
Okay, and, and apart from the side, do you know where the property line is? Is that on?
Yeah, we actually had markers because we renovated our backyard, so we have markers and you can clearly see that it's been placed on our property. And now that metal wire netting that's secured is even more on our property because there's like stakes.
Well, giving you caution to make sure that the facts are, as you said, it's on your property. You certainly don't have to tolerate anything that's on your property and could remove it.
I just don't feel like holding back there considering what's been happening. And I feel like that's putting me in a position that I'm uncomfortable with, that the town really should. I don't know if it's, if there's like some kind of fines or something, but I mean, this is just like a constant escalation of doing the same thing over and over and not listening. And I, I never got even a response if he was also notified of the town decision that needed to come down. Is that why he put up the wire? I don't know.
Well, keep in mind, there's, there's a difference between code compliance, that would be the code official's responsibility, and whether something is trespassing on your property.
Yes, and I see those as two different, I mean, I'm, I'm aware that I have to handle that with the police department, but I do want the town to uphold these codes and ordinances because every resident should be held to the same kind of level of just being a decent person and a decent neighbor.
Anthony's away, Mr. Hackett's away for Monday, myself, Mr. Wiss, and Mr. Hackett, and he's going to have to meet on several issues, I agree, really, next week, the Monday or Tuesday. I'd like to adapt the agenda. I agree, Mr. Wiss, we need to have the answer for my email said, take it down. Again, I have no problem as long as I can oversee Anthony. I can tell the resident, I have no problem telling the resident that it's, it's coming down. It's, if you put someone, your neighbor's property, you can't do that. I will get your direction, Mr. Wiss, on Monday, Tuesday, and we can address it that way, but I'll let you know what we're we'll discuss at the meeting how to proceed on this material.
Let me ask, as long as we have you here, in order to remove it, would one have to be on your property?
Yes.
And with. With appropriate oversight, do you have any objection to someone being on your property to remove it?
As long as I think somebody is there, like, you know, like a police officer or something, that I just don't trust him in the backyard.
Okay, understood. Just wanted to make sure that that was not going to be an issue.
Yeah.
He could remove it from your side of the fence if there was appropriate oversight. Okay.
There was, so my question is though, too, was he notified at the same time that we were notified?
Not by the town decision. I didn't, that might be, I couldn't find his email, so I actually also forward, I don't know if it was forwarded.
All right, because he had, he, I know that he's in contact with town several times for complaints that are unwarranted and on basis claims. So he really should have been contacted like I had requested because I wanted to avoid this.
As I said, I didn't, I don't have, I didn't have his email, I asked someone forward, Anthony's way, I'm not being forwarded or nothing.
So I feel like there's like, there's an issue here in terms of, I mean, I had specifically mentioned to himself and Mr. Hackett were at the property that I wanted him to know of the decision because I didn't want it to be something where we were back there taking down the plywood and he would come out and, you know, try to have some kind of altercation and we just don't want any of that. And that's why I wanted to have a clear cut town decision to do that.
As Ron indicated, we'll, we'll be meeting on other matters Monday or Tuesday, so this will be added and at least we understand what your parameters are.
And would I be notified of that? Because I'd like to have a timeline of when I'd be.
I don't think anybody would be on your side of the fence pulling things down without you knowing it.
Yeah, well, I don't know. That's what I, that's what I want to avoid.
Not with the borough's consent, they won't be doing it, so.
If, if they are there, I want a phone call.
Well, yeah, I mean, we've called, I mean, I've had, I don't even know how many reports I have on, on this whole issue. And it's really just from us renovating our backyard, which has been really discouraging.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us know. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to speak this time? Not seeing anyone. We now actually have to go into closed session. Resolution 22-198, which is authorizing for closed session. So I'd like a motion to approve the resolution 22-198 to have the governing body go into closed session to discuss an attorney-client privilege matter about Allen Dell senior housing contract negotiations.
I think we just want to add that after the closed session, while we'll be coming out, it'll solely be for the purpose of adjourning and not to take any action.
Yes, so after this, yeah, we will not be conducting any other business, so you're free to leave.
So moved, O'Connell. Second.
And a roll call please. Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lova Solo.
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell.
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole.
Yes.
Councilman Sasso, absent. Councilwoman Wozinski.
Yes. So that's it. We're going to be going into closed session now. So everybody, as we mentioned, we're not going to be, we're just going to end, adjourn the meeting right after closed session. So thank you all for coming. And thank you to our two mayors of the day.
Once again, congratulations, guys.
Congratulations, you guys. And I'd like to request a motion to adjourn the regular session. So moved.